Hopefully, going forward, we can turn this ship around. Oh. So I'm with here with my colleague Laura Zork, who's our director of our new education initiative we kicked off earlier this year. Freedom Works has always been involved in the fight for school choice, for, you know, more power to parents, not those bureaucrats that we all don't love. But this year, we decided to get very much more hands-on at the grassroots level, empowering grassroots, normal people, moms, working people, to get involved in the political process to take back their school boards. I know you've seen some panels here about CRT. We've gotten involved in that fight as well. But so great to be here. So we're gonna kick it off, and Laura?
Thank you, Dersie. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pennsylvania, for having us here today. If you can, I hope everyone can hear me in the back, okay? We have a really powerful presentation. We just heard a great presentation about critical race theory, and now we need to give you the tools that you can take back with you to empower parents in fighting against this radical agenda that we see. And I am the new National Director of Education Reform with Freedom Works. My background is, I'm a mom of four. That's my, that's my claim to fame, and I own it, right? But as a mom of four, I was involved in Florida. I started a group called Florida Parents Against Common Core during that time. And during that time, we started it with four moms, and we grew it to over 22,000 parents so that we could take our schools back in Florida. And these are the tools that I'm trying to take around the country to empower other parents to get involved, because that's how we're gonna battle what we're up against. So we have a new initiative with Freedom Works, and it's called BEST, Building Education for Students Together. And it's gonna take each and every one of us to get involved and take back our schools. So...
Nope.
Can we, the PowerPoint? I don't think it's reaching. Okay. So I am in the middle of a national tour, because this is very important, what we're seeing with critical race theories all across the country, and we need to make sure that our parents have the tools...
I see that.
...to stand up against the radical agenda. Next. BEST is, what our goal is, we want to ignite the largest parent movement that we've ever seen. We see the Black Lives Matter movement. We see the teacher union movement. We see all these other movements, but it's time that we have a parent-led movement, right? Woo! Next. So let me tell you what I'm seeing when I'm out across the nation, and this is not an exaggeration here, this is the fact of what our parents are faced with. This is the mindset that we have right now, and it goes back many years ago, and this is what we are seeing. Our parents, the role of a parent is under assault right now in America. And I'm gonna walk you through some good examples of that, but I think it sums it up in what Hillary Clinton says here in her book. And she says, "I believe the primary role of the state is to teach, train, and raise our children." Now, who agrees with that?
Boo!
But same, parents have the secondary role. Well, that's what we are seeing in our government schools. We're seeing that mindset. Next. So what do we see now because of the school closures? Parents have really woken up to the fact that there is so much anti-American ideology being shoved into our children's minds. Parents have woken up to that. We have seen the ideologies of critical race theory. We know some aren't calling it critical race theory, but it has its tentacles, and we can identify it. We know that it's hate and racism. Comprehensive sex ed's a huge initiative right now with this new administration coming through federal grants. Parents need to be aware of that. Parents have realized that they don't have control of where their children go to school. They don't have control of their children's education. So there really is a need now. Parents are seeing the need for school choice. Next. So where can parents go for support? Dersie, any suggestions here?
Yes. So it's great to complain. Everyone does it. We're on Facebook all day. We're, you know, sharing all these news articles about all this terrible stuff happening in our schools. We all hate it, but at the end of the day, Facebook arguments don't win. They don't change policy. So Freedom Works decided to, like I said earlier, get very hands-on on this fight to take back our education system. So we kicked off what we call our BEST Academy. BEST standing for Building Education for Students Together. So we're gonna be talking about that a little bit here today, but yeah, next.
Next. Sorry about this little technical difficulty up here. But before we get into what we have to offer, two solutions to taking back our schools, this is why it's important, because here in Pennsylvania, we're seeing the battle, and we're seeing where parents are being ignored, and no one's really listening, and they're really shutting our parents down. But across the country, what we are seeing, we are seeing school boards from California, from the West Coast to the East Coast, to every state in between. We're seeing this mindset, this shift in the thinking of these boards, and it's like they've been empowered to really just ignore parents. We had the gentleman just talking about Loudoun County here. This is a prime example of what's going on. Parents are now, because they're speaking out, we are seen as the opposition, right? Before, it was, "Parents aren't involved, that's the problem, that's why we don't have good, that's why our kids aren't succeeding, parents just aren't getting involved." Well, now, they don't want parents involved, because they don't want us to give them our say on what they're doing. So in Loudoun County, we see that that school board's totally shut parents down, and what it's gonna take, it's gonna take the parent movement like we're seeing there, because what these parents have been up against has been, it's really something that, it's made the national news because it's outside of Washington, DC, but it's happening all across America. Next. So other ways that school boards are shutting parents down. Because they don't want to listen to us anymore. We have a prime example in Georgia, which sweeping the whole state of Georgia with a school board, I think it's coming through the School Board Association. Because so many parents are showing up and speaking out, they were speaking out against, "Open our schools, we don't want the mask." And now they're speaking out against the CRT, and the boards are just frankly tired of hearing from parents. So what's their solution? Instead of fixing the problem and making the right decisions, what is their solution? So they come up with a solution, "Well, we'll just eliminate our, minimize the citizen input." So we're gonna take care of this, because too many parents are showing up, and we're spending too much time listening to citizen input. So again, and then the next state that I want to show here, and these are examples happen all over the country. Next. North Carolina, same thing, shutting parents down. Parents are coming to the school district, largest school district in North Carolina. They are, parents are speaking about, out against critical race theory. Well, what's the solution? The solution is, get rid of it and don't teach it. But what are they telling the teachers? They sent out a massive email to all the staff, and they said, "Ignore the white parents, because it's the white parents' kids that are benefit-fitting from the system." So parents are being shut down, and their voice is being canceled. Have a couple more examples, and we're gonna dive into the good stuff. Next. So I did hear there was a question about, "Well, what does it look like? How are they implementing this into the classroom?" And I want to give you an example right here. This is an assignment, this is a part of an assignment that they're using across the nation, and they want to identify us into our eight categories of whiteness. Now, are you a white supremacist? Are you a white privileged, white benefit, white critical, white traitor? And it goes on. So what their goal is, and this assignment is, they give our students surveys, and based on where you score on that survey, if you come out a 10, you come out a 20, you come out a 30, based on the survey, because the surveys are, "Do you have a mom and dad in the house? Have you ever went to bed hungry?" Things like that. You would think it was a simple survey, but what they do with that survey, they have the kids calculate, "Okay, if you're, if you're a 10, if you scored 10 or below, you're a 1, you're a white supremacist. If you scored a 11 to 20, you're a white warriorism?" Is that what it says, these categories? And so, so that's the first day. They want kids to identify where they are on the spectrum of whiteness. So the next day, the teacher comes back and says, "Okay, I want all our white supremists over here in this table. You sit over here. All our white critical over here, white benefit over here." And then they give assignments based on how they scored, and that's how they're starting to indoctrinate, and it's just this ideology that if you're at the top of the list, I'm pretty dang unsure they're gonna give you a lot more material than if you were at the bottom of the list, because they want you to be at one of the three where you just want to denounce your race. Next. Now, what are we seeing here in Pennsylvania? Now, whenever I'm traveling the country, and I'm looking at how critical race theory's being implemented, diversity, inclusion, equity, social justice, culturally responsive, and I look at all the different programs that are coming in, I have not, this was the first time I actually was researching a state where you actually have the Department of Education that's so proud of implementing the critical race theory ideologies. They have a whole page dedicated, whole site dedicated, to how they want teachers to implement through the supports, through these articles, publications, or reports. Now, I'm gonna tell you, parents are up against a battle, because normally in other states, what we're seeing is, other states are saying, "Oh, we don't have critical race theory." And then the parents are proving, yes, you do, and this is how, but nobody in other states, a lot of other states are admitting it. Well, here in Pennsylvania, they're so proud of it. And I want to show you, if you go to this site here, and I have it here, education.pa.gov, and you pull that up, Creating Inclusive Schools Radical and Ethical Identity, the very first article, and I wanted to just show you, because you need to really look at this and go through and see what your kids or your teachers are being suggested to teach to your kids. So if you'll go to the next slide, so the very first link, it goes to Teaching Your Young Children About Race, and then it goes into about misinformation, personal and social identity, and all those things. But the very, the next link they want you to click on is the Movement for Black Lives Matter and the Platform. So you click on that, and it takes you into other resources for Black Lives Matter, the movement that they want our teachers and our parents to know about so they can get involved in that. Now, that's a huge issue. We should not be having that in our schools. And if we're seeing that on that level, where do parents now have to go? Because what school board members are saying is, "Well, our Department of Education's telling us it's okay." So, next. Okay, go ahead.
Great. So now I get to talk. So like I said earlier, I'm the National Grassroots Director at Freedom Works. You know, Freedom Works is, we pride ourselves in not being a think tank, we're an action organization. It's great to write white papers, it's great to write nice blogs and all that, but ultimately, that doesn't change policy, that doesn't do much of anything, in our opinion. We know that, you know, your school board members, your state legislators, your federal legislators, they're only gonna change their behavior, the way they vote, if they're afraid of losing an election. At the end of the day, unfortunately, that's their number-one thing. They care about winning. They care about staying in office. It's their life force, it's their living for most of them. So Freedom Works decided to, like I said earlier, get very involved in taking back our schools. Very early on, you know, we know, it's just like with all other issues, you know, there's a lot of people over the country that care about something, and in many communities, sometimes people feel alone. They feel like they're the only ones talking about this sort of thing at work, in their friend groups, all that sort of thing. So Freedom Works' job is to connect these people, bring these people together, and get them involved in very easy ways to take back their schools. So we want to make activism easy. We don't want to make it seem like this big, hard thing to get into. I think a lot of people are very passionate about the issues, but they don't get involved because they think it's way more than it actually is. But all of us together can and do make great things happen. So next slide.
Next. Next. Okay.
So we kicked off our initiative called Building Education for Students Together. This is a lot of parts. One of the parts is a literal academy. So back, I think, in February, we brought together probably 200 or so parent leaders from around the country to Nashville. We did a conference to, you know, kick off this initiative, gave them the education they need on these issues, gave them some grassroots training, and ultimately tasked them with going back to their communities to become community leaders, getting other parents involved, empowering them. And again, I use that word, a lot of it is about just empowering people. People think sometimes they're small, but you, combined with all your normal friends, can do big things. We have a great group in Arizona that's doing a lot of good work. But it's multi-step. So step one, empowering and supporting parents to run for school board. Step two, educating parents in the community. Step three, strategically organizing local parents. And step four, unifying parent groups across the state. So it starts small, starts in your local neighborhood, maybe goes to the county level, and then we're trying to do state-led movements. So, next slide. So empowering and supporting parents, you know, really, like I said, it is about empowering people, giving them the resources, being available always. I like to, like I said, I run the grassroots team, and I tell my team they're basically customer service agents. You know, we have to serve our customers. So when I have a person from Texas call Freedom Works about an issue that's going down in San Antonio, you know, they're calling us because they're looking for solutions, they're looking for answers. So we're readily available to say, "Well, hey, here's some information about the issues you're talking about, and also, here's maybe an activist group nearby that we can connect you with," so you know that regular parent can get in with a much more experienced organizer, and then learn from them and go from there. So that's what we're all about, connecting people with each other and making cool things happen. So next slide. So like I said, we kicked off a actual academy. This is a six-week free course that we do, I believe, every Tuesday on Zoom at 7:00 PM. We go over, it's a six-week course, very purposefully created, so it starts off, you know, with the basics, and then gets a little bit more in-depth. By the end of it, we have people running for school board, a couple of them successfully recently already this year. It's been exciting. Couple of them started off as regular moms, now they're running their own press conferences out in Arizona. So it's, you know, we pride ourselves on this, and we're, you know, learning every time we do these courses, but we do offer this for free, and I encourage all of you to please hop on. At the end, there's gonna be a number you can text to get signed up, or you can also meet us up at the table. But next slide. So like I said, first week is just about getting schooled. A lot of people, they're very passionate about the issues, but they don't really know how things work. A lot of people don't really know all the key players, you know, in their state. I'm talking about superintendent, school board, maybe state legislatures, all that. They don't really know what all these pieces do. They've heard of them, but they don't know exactly what they do. So we want to get them, you know, up to speed on, well, who all the key players are, who are the people we need to influence to get the CRT out of our curriculums, get more school choice in there, giving more power to the parents. And then in week two, before declaring your candidacy, there's a bunch of things you should know. A lot of people, they're just like, "I'm running, let's go." And then they get in there, and, you know, they don't know what to do. So we like to go over a checklist about things they should consider before running. How much money is it gonna need? Unfortunately, there's money in politics, and unfortunately, you need some money generally to do stuff, buy literature, send out a mailer, run a website even. So we go through all of that, and hopefully by the end of week two, you know, they're kind of more up to speed on what they should be considering before running. Week three, how to market yourself. We walk people through how to make an elevator pitch. You know, if you're gonna be on the news for 30 seconds, you have 30 seconds to make your case. If you're gonna, you know, come to a school board meeting, grab that mic, you know, you need to know what you're gonna say. It's not a lot of time, you got a couple minutes. If you're going door-knocking, I've done thousands upon thousands of doors, you don't have a lot of time. These people are ready to close that door in your face, so you need to get your message down-packed, and we walk people through how to do that. Racing the finish line, just talking about, you know, now the campaign's going, what things people should be doing, you know, do I want signs? How many signs do I want? Where, you know, where should I put that? Door-knocking, what does that look like, et cetera? We walk people through all of that. And the power of grassroots is just accumulation of all of that, you know, explaining to people how to build your own supporter list, how to activate those lists, and ultimately, hopefully with all this combined, you more or less know what you're doing when running for school board. And then you're elected, now what? So of course, you won, so what? What are you doing, right? You have that seat now. We try to walk people through, you know, how to actually have a voice in your school board and have people, you know, take you seriously. At the end of the day, we're trying to pass good policy here, so we walk people through how to do that. So, next slide.
I'm gonna jump in here, because I just finished up a four-year term on the school board, and my last two, I was chair, and I'm gonna say that local, local is where it is. As a school board member, I never remember going to my congressman and saying, "Hey, Congressman Posey, do you think it's okay if I adopt this curriculum?" No. All this curriculum that's being adopted, that's on the local level. And in order for us to take our school boards back, we have to take back our local, our local seats. And that's why we're trying to make sure that if there is an open seat that's open, we want to make sure that we have a parent or someone that's like-minded to run for that seat. And if we have a school board member that's implementing all this stuff and ignoring us parents, we want to make sure we have a candidate to get them out of office, right? So, Dersie did a really good job going through the structure of it. These are some details, if, we'll just bounce around real quick, the yellow highlighted areas is what most individuals are interested in when they get on our Candidate Academy. Dersie, you wanna?
Oh, yeah. So like I mentioned earlier, we walk people through all of the key players, school board members, superintendents, explain what that means, the basics, right? Before you run, you kind of need to know what you're running for. I think a lot of people just kind of get in there without really knowing what they're doing, but we're here for, we're here as a support system, so.
So being on the school board, what we're seeing across the country, our school board members are elected, and then they go to their state association, and the state association tells them, "You need to support your superintendent, don't rock the boat, you need to be very, you need to be a team player." So they fill you with all this stuff, that you get in there, and you have this platform, and you want to make a difference, but when you get in there, you have this machine, you have this system that just wants to suck the life out of you and hold you down. So it's so important that you know what the roles and responsibilities of a school board member is, and that is not to be the yes person to your superintendent. You're in there as a school board member to represent your community, your parents, and your taxpayers. You're not in there to represent that system, and we gotta get those people out of there that have that mindset, but also, we have to educate our new board members to be prepared for that when they go in there. Next. This is where Dersie was talking about the value of creating an elevator speech. You only have one time to make an impression. If you have limited money, and you're out in the department store, or you're out at church, or wherever you are, and somebody says, "Why are you running?", you better know that answer, and you better have a good case why you're running, because that can mean you losing either someone that could donate to your campaign, or that means that you could even potentially lose a voter. Next. There's so many things that we walk you through, branding, next. We're gonna speed through these next few ones. There's a lot of target deadlines that we have to meet, but through fundraising, it's important that you know what these deadlines are. Dersie talked about the power of grassroots, that's on the next slide. You have to know how to utilize your deadline to be able to use your volunteers, because the goal is to win your election. Okay, keep going. So, the next step, as Dersie was talking about, educating parents, that's what BEST is about. We're out trying to educate our parents on the issues, because they really need to understand what we're up against. Because when we walk into these school board meetings, and we're telling them, we're seeing this in our child's curriculum, we're being shut down and saying, "They're telling us that we're not seeing what we're really seeing." So it's important that parents are educated on those issues, and we're gonna walk you through ways that you can get educated and help share this information with other parents. Next. So the first thing is, you have to understand the facts. You have to attend these school board meetings. How many in here, I want to see a raise of hands, how many in here has attended a school board meeting in the last two months? Two months?
Then you can't complain.
One month. How many's attended in the last month? See, that's the issue here. People are not showing up to these school board meetings and holding them accountable just by having your presence there. They'll know, you're watching what they're doing. But also, you'll be hearing, what are they adopting? What are they putting on the agenda? And your next step here is, you need to be reading that backup information on these agendas. And as you go to these school board meetings, you'll start hearing a conflict of what they're saying at each meeting, and once you start seeing that, you know that they're really hiding things from you. But we also have a public records request, resource and information, all this stuff's on our website at Parents Know BEST, but, Dersie, you want to talk about the freedom of information?
Sure, yeah. As a citizen, you have the right to do a freedom of information request, FOIA request, to see what's really going on in your local governments, your governments. You know, we encourage that, we train activists how to do this, so they can get the real information. You know, your local legislators, a lot of times, like, do things in the dark. At the federal level, it's even worse. They literally vote on these crazy bills, sometimes without voting, they do those, you know, those voice votes. So we try to train our activists to know how to do these requests to get the information they need. I mean, some of these people go to the point of literally, we've had our parents banned from school board meetings, not because they're disruptive, just because they're there asking questions people don't want to answer. So we've had in Arizona, people literally kicked out. So you, as a citizen, do have the right to know what your government's doing, so we walk activists through how to go about that process.
And that's important, this is so important for you to understand, because not every, I know this crowd is very well-informed, but it's our job to let other parents in the community to know, we have the right to this information. So if you're at a school board meeting, and they're talking about an upcoming equity training, we, as citizens, have the right to see what is gonna be trained to our teachers, and we have the right to request that information of what that training is. We also have the right to request emails that are going back and forth among our superintendent, the staff, because that is how we know, because they're very hushed on the dais, but where you really get into the meat of things is whenever you start requesting emails, and they need to know, they need to know, we're watching, and we're gonna hold you accountable. And this is, I would encourage you, if anything from this, attend a school board meeting this month or coming up, and I encourage you to look at the backup information of these school board meetings. And then the next thing is, start requesting, start off slow to see what the process is of requesting public information, just so that you get familiarized with what the process is, so whenever you really have something that you want to know about, you already have that, those standards in place of knowing how to do that. Next. So, another part of this, now that you have all this information, and you know all this... So, another part of this, now that you have all this information and you know all this, we all know, we're all educated now, but what do we do with that? We're, we're not gonna have any type of movement on this if we just hang on to this to ourself, right? We have to be sharing this out, we have to get it out to other people, and we have to take advantage of every opportunity we have to get this out to other, other parents and other community members. And the way that we do that, we have to get up and we have to get to these school board meetings after we know the facts and we are disagreeing with what they're telling us. We have to be speaking at these school board meetings. But you also need to know, going in there, most school boards have three-minute rules, they have, uh, they have so many different rules, so you need to understand what those rules are before you get there. But we have to be getting to these school board meetings and speaking because that's how we're getting in the national media, that's how we're getting in the news, and that's how we're getting the message out, because parents are coming to these school board meetings, that is making national news, which we wanted to, right? Because other parents need to realize, they're not in this alone. As a parent, what we're being told right now, when we go into our, uh, teachers and we're going into the principal and saying, "I'm not really for sure, this, this kind of makes me feel uncomfortable." What we're hearing is, "Oh, you're, you're the only parent that's, that's having this problem." We, we're not hearing this from any other parents, but if you're a parent and you get to that school board meeting and you're just speaking out, then you, other parents that have been told they're the only parent that has a problem realizes that they're not alone. So it's so powerful that you get to school board meetings.
Yeah, and I would even say, you know, record everything. I mean, we, we, we at Freedom Works try to also get our activists up to date on, you know, social media and all that sort of thing. Social media is a very powerful tool, I know. We all don't like the Facebooks and Twitters, but unfortunately, you know, the majority of the voting population, the people who are making those, doing the influence by voting these people out of office, uh, they exist on Facebook, a lot of them. Uh, so we encourage our activists to, you know, record these meetings, record, you know, if you go up to speak, record your speech so they don't misquote you. Uh, the press loves to misquote people. Um, they want to make us all look like crazy radicals when we're just trying to explain to people, "Two plus two equals four, not two plus two equals you're racist." Um, so, yeah, please bring your cell phones, record and get those up on social media. Basically, every week, I'm seeing three or four, five, uh, you know, videos of parents speaking out at their school boards and making national news. So, people are paying attention. Loudon's the big one right now, but it's happening everywhere, so.
So another way that is very inexpensive and effective is writing your letters to the editor. You need to get, grab what those, uh, emails are to your editor, you need to understand, is it 200, 250 words, whatever it is? You need to be utilizing that as much as you can because you need to start writing your opinions and putting those into your local papers so that you can share the information you've learned, but also empower other people to start speaking out. And it, letters to the editor are so powerful, that's the number two, that is really helping these other parent groups across the nation we're working with make it into a national, um, movement that we're seeing. Next. So, local parents get organized, that, that's the key here. We have all the knowledge now, we have all the information, now it's time for us to put it together, it's time for us to organize locally, get our groups together, and I have a few steps we can do, uh, to help you with that. So, what is so valuable? I know we don't like the FB, the, the F-word, um, page, but, um, but right now, that is the tool that most parents go to, okay? A lot of parents are on Facebook, moms are on Facebook, and that is a free resource and it's a free tool. And as you start building your, your parents together, they're looking at a way to be organized and connect together. So I would encourage you, um, if you are looking at starting a group, first thing you need to do is come up with the name of your group. And when you come up with the name of your group, you need to make sure that you include the location of where you are, um, have a what, what are you about, what are you about? Education, that's what you're about, or parents' rights, um, and, and who you are. So, be very careful whenever you create your name and make sure that it's easy for others to find, because this is the page that's gonna help you get organized. And whenever you have a, a night that you all need to get to that school board meeting and speak out, this is your hub, um, for all the parents to stay up to date on this, this page. But another area that's very effective is purchasing a $29.99, uh, faith, or website. And, and we have so many, um, resources that we have available to us, and that's something Freedom Works, we help small groups get started, if that's, um, do you want to talk about the value of?
Uh, yeah, so, I mean, every campaign, every organization should have at least a very basic website as a landing page for people to learn a little bit more about your organization. It creates legitimacy, makes you guys seem like you're a real group and not just a bunch of random people. Um, it gives people comfort in getting involved. Uh, you want to have very easy-to-get-involved buttons and steps on there that, you know, we can help you, uh, craft and, and make. Uh, but not only just for other activists or concerned parents to get involved, it's also good for press. Um, you know, if press keeps hearing about your group attending these meetings, they're eventually gonna look you up. Uh, you want to have a good mission statement on there, you want to be very straight to the point. Um, so, you know, they can't just go and say, "Well, Allegheny County parents require the education are this, this, and this," when in reality, your website says you're actually for this, this, and this. Um, you know, you have that already created, so it, again, it's all really about legitimacy, honestly, and making it as easy as possible, uh, removing the barriers to entry for people to get involved with the organization, or in some cases, give you money, because at the end of the day, we need money to do things, unfortunately, so.
Another benefit of having your own website is that you can put on there what you want to put on there, and you don't have to worry about being censored. And if you have resources that you need to post, um, a lot, a lot right now on social media, they don't want to hear about critical race theory, equity, racism, hate, and things like that, they'll, they'll bump that off. So, um, but, how are we gonna get organized if we don't have a hub to come to, right? So you have to be creative, it's either gonna have to be social media, it's either gonna have to be a website, or when you're out at these meetings, you're gonna have to be collecting, uh, signatures from parents, their names with their emails. So you have to have a way that you can stay connected, and these are the best tools that I've seen. Uh, this is what we use whenever I started Florida Parents Against Common Core. Um, I purchased a $29.99, uh, website package and I was only allowed to have 10,000 that could sign up on that, and, uh, we exploded that, but, and then I had to bump it up to the $59.99 so I could have more that could sign up. But, if it wasn't for that website, and because on that website, I was actually able to put the action steps of steps that we need to be taking, um, at these next meetings, and it's so valuable to have those, uh, those things in place. So what have we learned? We've learned, we gotta get out to our school board meetings. We've learned that we have to start doing requests and start really looking at, what are they adopting in their school board meetings? Cause all the materials, supplemental materials that they're adopting, that's how they're bringing in critical race theory. This is the time of year, parents are thinking, it's summer, schools are, schools are out. But I'm gonna tell you, the districts right now, all their planning takes place during the summer. And all the planning that they're gonna do this year is gonna really row into what 21, 22 school year, what they're gonna be implementing. And they're also looking at adopting their budget right now. This is the time of the season, we have to be diligent, bill, and get out there and know what our school boards are doing and hold them accountable. Um, and then, we have to be sharing this information out with other parents and other community members. We need to start having information nights about critical race theory. We need to be having information nights on how parents can get involved and get engaged because our parents, these, these are our kids, right? These are not the kids of the government. And unless we step up and we show that we're here, we're not going away, we're, if we don't do that, we're gonna get what we get, right? And it's our job, these are our kids, we have to show up and we have to hold them accountable. Next. So, this is really the key to the final step here. We have the teachers' associations across the country, we have the teachers' unions' associations across the country, we have the superintendent's associations, we have the parent-teacher associations that, by the way, do not represent parents. Um, we have all these associations where everyone comes together and they get these resources and they're connected, but what do the parents really have? Where do the parents really go to stay connected, stay supported? And, uh, there's really not anything out there, and so that's why it's so important that we have started through our, our initiative across the country, every state, we have created a coalition of parent groups. So here in Pennsylvania, we have Pennsylvania Parents Know Best. This is a new coalition that we have started, so once we have all these little groups that are created, you could be five, you could be a 10-person group, you can be 50, 100, but we all have to be coming together and we all have to be providing each other with the resources that we have, with knowledge. We need to know what's going on the west side of the state, the right side of the state, um, all over, because we know that we can be empowered if, if we come together. And that's one of our jobs, that, why we're here, we want to help support parents across the state of Pennsylvania. You have to run for school board, you gotta get right candidates involved, you have to get organized, and then we have to come together is really the final step in this. Next. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, like Laura said, we, uh, not only in Pennsylvania, have, uh, parent coalitions all across America. Uh, if you do want more information, if you do want to take the first step to get involved, everyone, please take out your phones, text BEST, B-E-S-T, to 41490. Again, that's BEST to 41490, and we'll send you, you know, update alerts, uh, we'll get you into the next training, uh, into the next event, maybe locally. Laura was just in Pittsburgh last night, uh, she's gonna be in Ohio next week. Uh, we have other team members all across the country as well. Uh, so please, again, it's BEST to 41490. Um, yeah, and we really appreciate your time, so we'll take questions. Yes, sir.
Um, I've been on, uh, school board for nine years. And I've been heavily active in this, very conservative. We had a successful year, we've, we've been open five days a week since the beginning of the year. Whoops, oh, got a microphone. Since August. But the key problem I see is there's no resources for curriculum from a nu, I'll take neutral, but from a right-side perspective. Um, there's these, uh, websites, uh, a lot of online learning is going on, Schoology is used, I think, predominantly in the school districts. There's another website that's called Newzella, and they take 110, they advertise 110 news organizations, and they break it down and by level of school, it's a fantastic, it really is, a fantastic site, except there's nothing conservative on it, there's no vote point of view. Our biggest problem as a conservative person on the school board is we have no resources on these type of issues that we can provide to our s, school districts. I have no alternative on these curriculum issues because we don't have these alternatives that can replace these robust services that are out there now. That's a big question I have and, uh, a, a big problem I see in our, in our systems.
Well, I think that's, you're exactly right, that's coming from the Department of Education that's providing you with these resources that are biased. So, we have to make sure, yes, we're working on this on the local level, but we have to make sure that we tackle this on the state level too, to make sure that we can get the right people, um, in office for your governor and for your state representatives and your legislators so that they can help support school board members to make sure we get the right materials. But I'm gonna tell you, 10 years ago, did we see this stuff? Did we see critical race theory? Did we see the anti-American? Did we see the, did we see the 1619 project? No. So who's making money here? Our publishers. We need to get back to the basics, we need to hold these publishers accountable and say, "We don't want this crap in our schools, we're not gonna buy your materials." I'm gonna tell you, I just went to the largest, uh, homeschool conference in the nation in Florida with about 15,000 parents. That whole auditorium, there was thousands and thousands of vendors there with curriculum. Now, those homeschool parents are teaching this stuff. So, it's, there is curriculum out there, it's just, it's not making it to the school boards for, through your curriculum department that they're proposing it to you. The curriculum is out there, there's good curriculum out there, it's just we are choosing not to, uh, even take a look at it.
Anyone else in the back?
Right back here.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
I just want to compliment, uh, the presenters. Uh, may I ask the, uh, the attendees a question?
Yeah, here.
How many of you in your school districts have heard from the president of the school board or the superintendent that they're not going to raise your taxes? Thank you. Thank you for that. I was a school board director in Mill Creek Township, Erie County, Pennsylvania, and boy, do I have a story for you. When you start asking questions, you have to start from the, from the foundation. I'm usually interested in finance. When you start asking about the budget, where did this money go? I'd like to see the invoice, and they don't show it to you? As a school board, an elected public official, when they don't show it to you, what options do you have? Anybody? You, you have no options. You have to take them to court, and I did. In fact, there was one gentleman this morning said, "Lou, I know you from somewhere, you're different." You know what I told him? I said, "Thank you for the compliment. What man is going to wear a pink sports jacket to a conference like this?" Because I, I have challenged the school board, the superintendent, and listen to this one, your solicitor. Your solicitor works for a law firm, or maybe the solicitor is a partner shareholder in that law firm. Where is the money going? When you ask for a, the legal fees on a monthly basis from the superintendent and they don't provide it, you file a lawsuit, and I did, a mandamus in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Do you know what the superintendent and the school board directors did? They counterclaim, they countersued me for defamation. They are spending the Mill Creek Township taxpayer money to sue me as an elected official. You can't do that. So what I would suggest to everyone here, follow the money and then connect the dots, and be aware that you are going to be up against not only the, the board, the school district, and the, and the solicitor, you're gonna be up against the media. God bless you.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody. We do have a table, uh, in the exhibitor hall, please stop by, we'd love to talk to you.
Um, and one last, uh, item, we have signs here for individuals that want to start putting together, uh, rallies outside their school board. We do have a campaign, nationwide campaign called Stop Racism, Stop Hate, Stop Critical Race Theory. Um, we need to be talking about this, we need to have it on every conversation, and when you meet new people, they need to know what's going on because that's how we're gonna be able to stop this stuff together. So thank you and enjoy the rest of your presentation.
Thank you.
Day.